I'll open the regular meeting of Board of Selectment Monday, November tenth, two thousand and twenty-five at six thirty-seven P M. Stand for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and to this world with liberty and justice for all.
First up, we have move warrants, W R twenty-six, ten payables, P R twenty-six oh nine payroll, W T H twenty-six oh nine withholdings.
I'll take that as a motion. I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have approval of minutes for eight four twenty-five and eight eighteen twenty-five. Chance to?
Yeah, did.
Did.
Yep. Um, it's all second. If you're good with it.
Yep. On favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the board assessors is?
Yeah, unfortunately, she couldn't make it tonight.
Next up, Michelle Bertrand.
Michelle Bertrand, four seven two North with Thirteenth Road. Have a problem asking for help, guidance. The Route one forty-eight package store is directly across the street from me. October seventeenth, I was notified that they were putting up lights and to let them know what happened. You know, they shouldn't be aiming into my living room, she said. I notified her that they were aiming in all my windows and lighting up the inside of my end house, lighting up my whole yard, all the way up to the back of my property line. And she's joked about, let's put curtains on, let me tint your windows. October twentieth, they did turn around and had the electrician shut off one light. They left the one by the smoker on. Uh, we still says it's still lighting up our whole property. Anyone drives down my driveway, uh, that we put in, it's aimed right at us. So you're kind of blinded by the light. Then on the twenty-eighth, because we had told John this and he's like, well, they're gonna put a shield, we're getting something. And then he's like, well, we angled it down, we're gonna angle it down. So on the twenty-eighth, I contacted Maribel, I emailed the board of health, the zoning board. And I have gotten an email saying that the zoning board does not do this, the board of health does not do it. On the twenty-ninth, well, the thirty-first, the board of health contacted me. On the twenty-ninth, the electrician came, I showed him pictures and he says, that's up to the owner of the property. Um, all he did was angle one light, he says he angled it down. He re-turned on the second light, but he put it on the corner of property of the building. Still lights up the inside of my living room, my bedrooms, um, on the second floor. My house is actually higher than the store. It, so it's also lighting up the woods, which my house, my property goes up at an angle and it's lighting up the back trees. That about my property. We've tried to talk to him and Jonathan and Kathy. They won't even answer us now. We've asked nicely. Um. Asked the building inspector, he says there's nothing he can do until they go to pull a permit. And if they do pull a permit, he can probably send it to planning board and have the planning board possibly do specify, you know, make. Um. Make the store do something about certain things. Uh. But as a business in town, I would think they, the town would want them to respect their neighbors. And I know like they have their liquor license coming due, they have a used car lot license, which. They haven't sold cars in quite a few years, so wondering if that's even.
A lot of.
Yeah.
Issue one last year.
No. They don't have a. Not anymore?
No.
Okay. Um, I talked to the planning board and I'm hoping that I get put on their agenda, which would be the eighteenth, I believe. Um. Yeah. They never had a problem with it and according to National Grid, someone was paying for it for years. The light on the telephone pole, which has shields, so it's aimed at the store, not at the road. Um. They realized that no one had been paying on it for a few years, so they came and shut it off. They says it's less than a dollar a day for it to be reactivated.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Now, so I don't know if the board can do something to help.
Bertrand, we don't have a bylaw. Are you, Rob, meeting with the planning board, you said?
I'm hoping to.
Yeah.
Yeah, um.
She's gonna be meeting with you guys?
Put that on the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, because we do have the pictures of the inside and it's a shame because you wake up at three, four o'clock in the morning. I have light shining on behind my head through the windows.
Are these new lights?
These are new lights.
Rewired, I mean.
Thirty years, they did get a permit, they did pull a permit.
Yeah.
Are you sure you can picture?
Yeah, I lived there for thirty years, never had a problem. And all of a sudden, it's like, never had to have curtains on my windows. And I hate to say, I've never had curtains on my bedroom windows, living in that house. And now.
That's our bedroom. That's my daughter's bedroom. My other, don't, what's that one, front of the house? Oh, yeah. I mean, that's nuts.
Yeah, I go sit out on my porch and it's like five o'clock in the morning, almost, you know, it's like dusk or dawn, you know?
What's the timeframe?
Be making my own shadows.
The lights are from dusk to dawn, or depending if it's a cloudy day, it stays on.
Hey, this is nuts.
I sit down in my living room to watch my TV, my picture window's right here, I'm sitting on my couch and it's beaming over my eyes.
It's not.
I have to either shut a curtain or duck down.
It's down the street.
I'm surprised no one has said anything with the police department coming down from Rutland Road and taking a left. If I can see that light from Rutland Road and I can see it from Forest Hills, it's quite bright.
I have to remember right there. I know exactly what you're talking about.
Well, from Forest Hills to Rutland, to Rutland Road has to be almost a mile, maybe, if you can see it.
Yeah, it's pretty bright. I haven't been by, isn't it? Make up.
You know, especially with the rain and the light coming down. As you're driving into it. So deal with the planning board?
Deal to.
You try to?
Yeah. And if they don't get anywhere, they can't help you, back to us, so let us know.
To see if.
And see if we, uh, we'll talk to the building inspector.
Does the building inspector says?
They'll talk to the building inspector. And.
See what happens.
We can do.
Okay, I appreciate it.
I agree with you, the lights are really bright.
If you're on uphill.
Nope.
Could that be put on a motion detector, so it only goes on when, when it needs it? Because I think John's concern is Kathy goes out to the dumpster, if there's somebody out there in the dark.
If he was concerned, if he was concerned.
Place up without bothering anybody beside it, it's fielded. So the thing is with these lights, they're like L E Ds, you have a look at a Christmas tree, you got one light that's beaming in and out.
Yes.
Any others don't.
Like headlights.
This is the same way.
Yeah.
As long as you can see the screen, you're gonna be blinded, you have to tip it completely away.
Away.
Otherwise, no matter what you see, that light is so bright, you can't stop it.
Probably cost him less to pay for the light on the pole.
I would think so.
Than to run.
But he already bought the lights, already paid the electricians twice.
And if they're worried about security, on June thirtieth, I took Kathy to Eastbrook Field Court. And then I took her to Leominster Court to get a temporary restraining order from one of the residents in town that they were having problems with. And they had no lights at all on unless they remembered to flip the switch, which they never did. Month later, because it was only a temporary one, so it lasted a month, July twenty-ninth, I brought her back to Leominster Court to get a year restraining order from this gentleman. They still, she still didn't turn on the lights when she worked at night. And if they were worried about security, sorry, husband, don't you should think you should be working night shift or day, and you know? Or if you're worried about security, you have the metal pull-down doors, put a padlock on it. Because right now, they just pull it down and they don't even lock it. Now, and that's how they stole the motorcycle from there, because that was not padlocked shut, those metal doors. What's the sense of having them if you can just pull them?
Get bored and like watching.
No, because I've been there when she's closed the store. And they just pull it down.
Okay, okay. Let's see what we can do.
Okay. I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Those were the first.
Good night. That were on last year, but did not, the whole committee did not get reappointed this upcoming year.
We need probably the first two, we don't really have a list of if these two still want to be on it or.
Yep.
Anyways, we'll find out.
The open space committee discussion is next up.
Phil.
Uh, Phil, did you have anything on the open space?
Uh, no, only that we'd like to have Sean Sealy appointed to the open space committee.
Right now, there's nobody appointed.
Okay, I guess my term has expired, so the question of renewing me and adding Sean.
Well, in effect, we don't have a committee right now.
Right.
Because everybody ran out June thirtieth that was on it. And we're not even sure whether everybody got sworn in.
The year before.
The year before, other than obviously yourself.
Yeah.
Um.
So the selectmen appointed committee, I had forgotten how that works.
Yeah, it's an appointed committee.
Mm-hmm.
Um, what we're gonna have to do is. Put it out on the web, have people apply.
Did Lisa get sworn in, Huntington?
Uh, I think that she did, yeah.
So probably, and then the other two names were, uh, John Barringer and Ron. Oh, I'm gonna.
Woolen?
Woolen.
Woolian, Woolen.
Lannan.
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 Well, we put it out, get some applications.
Put it out, a couple agendas out.
Yep. And then, uh. December eighth meeting, we can make the appointments. I think it's the eighth, right?
I think so, yeah.
That sounds right, because it's twenty-fourth and then.
Right, yeah, yeah. So we're done with twelve, 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 eight, twenty-five.
Gosh, that sounds terrible.
I know.
Look by so fast.
Yeah, well, at this point, it's just a question of reviewing the draft of the open space plan that Central Mass region plan prepared.
And, and may I say to that, Phil, um, the draft is pretty much complete at this point, it's been posted on the website. So this project for the open space and the M V P is pretty much to completion, it will be completed fully one hundred percent by, in December.
Right.
So I don't know.
That was that meeting, you were here that night when Mark.
So I don't know how much more an open space committee would do once the plans are officially done.
I think it's their job to implement it, to implement the plan.
Right, yeah. Years ahead of us.
Well, gather the names of people that are interested and make the appointments on December.
And I'll attach the, the application, that note.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good.
Emergency leave policy discussion. I don't think we need that.
Um. Double-sided pages?
Somewhere, somewhere.
Because I'm like, why does this one look so much bigger?
That on me.
I don't know, this one is not organized like that one, so I'll print two on those.
Anyway, the one that covers it is the, uh, one the state requires us to provide twenty-four hours a year for personal.
Yeah.
Most small necessities leave act. So that would cover what we were questioning. And it's already in our policy.
Yeah, so that's the F M L A and, uh.
Yeah.
That's, so that's an additional twenty-four hours.
That's additional.
Which is added in by us or the state.
Well, the state.
Okay, and then they can use vacation time and.
They can use vacation, not personal, but not sick.
Right.
For that.
Yeah, yeah, that's, and that's pretty much the way it is everywhere.
Yeah.
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 Yeah. Right.
So I guess we're all set on that.
Mm-hmm.
We just, but the department heads know. Uh, next up is the treasurer's. Office.
Get a chance to.
Yeah, I read it like three times.
Well, Dennis here, I don't know if I want to. Vote it tonight, but we're gonna send it to town council anyways.
Yeah.
Because this is a.
It's a contract.
It's a contract. So.
I would. Give Maribel our questions, does any of you have any questions?
Right.
You send it to town council, you can highlight. The areas of questioning.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we already talked about a couple of them, but we're just kind of, just the obvious ones. I'll make a motion that we forward this to, uh, town council for review.
Second, on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then we'll vote on it, hopefully have it back for either the twenty-fourth or.
Yeah.
The eighth. Um. The sooner the better, because I think we're at the. The higher rate until we do, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Right.
Next up, highway department requests for a day off after Thanksgiving.
Mm-hmm.
The Friday, right?
Friday after.
Right, all three employees requested the day off.
And I think that was contingent on their part of, uh, it wasn't a snow event.
Correct. There was an email stating that. At least two out of the three be available, um, if there was weather.
Or.
Conditions or.
Yeah.
Any of that sort, but.
Believe we did this last year.
Yeah, we did. Yes.
Right, now would it be, um, I guess I would ask, would this just apply to? The highway department having the day off, or is it gonna be, uh?
Last year was all employees.
Yeah, the town hall offices as well off, okay?
Everybody, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that's actually, I think the discussion we had was that.
Okay.
In the case of the highway department, they're gonna use personal days or vacation days.
They submitted.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah.
Their week time sheets.
Nothing else is open, library's not open on Friday, is it?
Nope. So it doesn't affect.
So that's good.
No.
And. Police department's exempt, basically, because.
Right, and fires on call, so.
Yep, yep. Alright, so I'll make a motion, um. Approve the, the day off request for the members of the highway department for the day after Thanksgiving.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're with them. Department has some.
Yes, the town hall.
Mm-hmm. Okay, next up, conservation commission. Wetland conservation bylaws.
Yeah, at our October seventh meeting.
Name.
Uh, Sean Sealy. On our October seventh meeting, we reviewed, um, wetlands protection bylaws, uh, and we unanimously voted to move them forward to the board of selectmen. They'll need to be reviewed by legal counsel, but they're going to document the O K M Conservation Commission operating procedures. Increase local discretion and protecting wetland resources, limit wetland replication. Extend protection of potential, extend protection to potential vernal pools that have not yet been certified. Establish a two-hundred-foot protective buffer for, for vernal pool habitat. Prevent harmful activities near vernal pools. And discourage replication. Regulate industrial noise like vibration and runoff near wetlands. Limit noise to forty-five decibels at vernal pool habitat edge. Lighting within three hundred feet must be shielded. Large projects within five hundred feet of vernal pools require local permitting. Uh, it prohibits the storage and transportation of hazardous materials within two hundred feet of wetlands or vernal pools. And it enforces pollution prevention by allowing fines up to five hundred dollars per day. Um, so this would give us more resources to stop reckless development in O K M, um, through, through enforcement and local, local discretion.
And this has been voted by the, uh, conservation?
Yes, including Carl Lindley Junior.
Well, first off, it'll have to go through the, the public hearing process.
Well, I was just gonna say this, have you talked to our planning board at all about this? Any bylaws gotta go through them?
No, we haven't.
Okay, there's your first step.
Okay.
Good. Um, you also want to give a copy of this to the FinCom because they're advisory on all things that go to town meeting.
Yeah.
They may not care one way or the other, because it's not financial.
Well, it could be.
It could be, but normally, they don't. But just let them know what, what you're doing. And then when all that's done, you gotta give us a, you have the forms for an article, you gotta put an article on the special, excuse me, the annual town meeting. For this to be voted on.
The one thing that's in here that may be a problem is it states in, uh, I'm not seeing what section it is, but. This is written, you've identified it as exceeding, um. State requirements in certain circumstances.
Yeah, just to add some extra protection that the Wetlands Protection Act doesn't. I just feel like we're kind of like a target for industrial developers because we have weak conservation bylaws right now. Nothing exceeds the, the state standard.
Once you've done all of that, present it to us to put it on as an article. From there, we have to send it to town council for legal review. Um, once they approve it, then we have to vote on it, whether it's gonna go on the article, on the warrant or not, as an article. So this is nothing that's gonna happen overnight.
Mm-hmm.
And the next meeting is until May. So, but lead time is needed for all of this stuff, particularly in the bylaw, so you're hitting it at the right time. You know?
Yeah, so it's section one point eight relation to state law. This bylaw provides additional protections beyond the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act. And complements it, state compliance does not exempt applicants from local approval. So that may run into a legal issue with the state as far as enforcement, enforcing the town. You know, what's written here, if it isn't in the state. So that's something.
Okay.
You may want to work on because.
Look into that. Yeah, we'd like to have enforcement ability because that, the, the conditions on three, five, eight Poldrick Road are a violation of the Wetlands Protections Act. But, um, D V P's unresponsive, so we can't really do anything about it to, uh. We could be finding them every day if we had enforcement ability, so that's, that's kind of what we're, that's our goal.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, my point is if it. If it's not required by the state, you're gonna have a hard time collecting if it went to court.
We'll, we'll try to match ours to what the state does, or.
That would be my recommendation.
Okay.
Um. Because then you have the state. State rules and regulations, you know, backing a lot.
The other thing on the one point two commission establishments is, if I establishes Conservation Commission under Mass General Law, chapter forty, section eight C. That has to be adopted by the town, forty-eight C has to be adopted at a town meeting.
Yeah.
Have we done that? Do you?
I don't know.
You might want to check with the town clerk to see if the town has actually adopted that law, otherwise you can't provide a bylaw.
Okay. What section is that?
The first page.
It's right on your page here, chapter forty, section eight C.
On one point two.
One point two.
Lucy, you didn't find anything in the town reports, or did you? For the initial inception, remember we were talking about it that day?
Yeah.
I, I think that's what, that's one of the things that we want, is to have the, the Conservation Commission to be officially established. Under forty-eight C, and just so that we're, we're in the O K M bylaws and that our procedures are well documented.
So like we were talking, Lucy, that may be in the selectmen's minutes. Back from the day, whether it was in the seventies or eighties.
Eighties. The first one was initiated was eighty-seven or eighty-eight.
Because if there was a vote by the board of selectmen, it's gonna be in those minutes.
Mm-hmm.
You know, to, because it's obviously not, it's not a town meeting vote.
Aiming people to be on the Conservation Commission.
Yeah.
And then they sent those people out to get certified.
So you've pretty much, I think, gone through the reports.
I remember we looked.
Yeah, so there was no town meeting vote for conservation.
Not that I've seen.
So that would mean that's, if it was voted, it was done by. Selectmen at some point in, in the eighties or.
That was when the, um, there was a lot of building going on.
Right.
And of course, there's so much wetlands in O K M that the board of selectmen no longer wanted to take on that responsibility. So they said, let's, the state was naming Conservation Commissions in a lot of the towns, so they chose to do the same thing.
Did you ever find a nineteen seventy-seven town? Did you ever find a nineteen seventy-seven town report? That was the one we couldn't find.
Yeah, no. Not yet.
Alright.
The way chapter forty is written, there is no Conservation Commission unless the town adopts eight C.
So that would be for step number one.
So that's step number one, really, is we gotta get an article on to do that, and then there's a bylaw.
So when, when was eight C adopted by the legislature, you know?
Long time ago.
Probably before what we're talking about.
Yeah, it's under chapter forty, so. Probably talk.
Theoretically, they. It's probably set up for Ronnie to sleep to begin with.
Us?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Sure, check with, check with Christine. See if she has any record of any town meeting vote.
Nineteen fifty-seven. Let's say she adopted it.
Okay.
You might want to remember that nineteen fifty-seven is when the law went through. So anything after that, our records show.
So theoretically, the town could have voted it.
Passed the Conservation Commission Act.
After nineteen fifty-seven.
But nobody knows.
No. But we're only looking from the mid seventies through.
That's what I'm saying, you gotta go back to nineteen fifty-seven.
Through all the town reports. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the key number, Lucy, nineteen fifty-seven.
And Sean, she may have a book with all the statutes that were adopted by the town in there, I believe she does, so she should be able to find that quickly for you.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that would reference the town meeting or town meeting vote.
Yep.
Yep.
At the end of all of this wetland bylaw, this has to go to the Attorney General for approval. So, once the town votes it through. Clerk gets it, she sends it to the AG. The AG will make notations, so she'll just approve it either way. Same thing with our battery bylaw came back with changes.
Okay, get the ball rolling on it.
So, that's where you get ahead. But at least in the meantime, we have this that we're to, so appreciate it. You have any other questions, Sean?
No, no, no.
No, okay. Thank you. Anything else on that?
No.
No. Make a public session for anyone who. Does he have a public session? Anybody?
May I speak?
For a public session?
Yes.
Yeah.
Name, name and address.
George and Jan Paris, Old School House Road. So I saw that you had something on here about a correspondence from Old School House Road, so I figured. I can't really talk about it until you see it. We wanted to listen, see what the discussion might be tonight. Because we know it's been put on an agenda for later, that there could be some difficulties between now and then. If it, you know, if we were to get a big snowstorm or something like that. We'll listen to you from there.
This is from a neighbor of yours. The correspondent.
Okay, did you already see the one that I sent?
Oh, sorry. Sorry, I was looking at something else. So you had requested through email. To be on the agenda.
For, yes, but when I saw.
Agenda for the twenty-fourth.
When I saw this, I thought maybe we should get down there sooner and see what discussion might.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
It was just listed as under correspondence.
All that means is correspondence that comes in, she's got to tell us about, there's nothing we can vote on because we haven't seen this.
I know, I've seen it read.
You know, but still can't vote on it.
We understand that.
You are on for the twenty-fourth, specifically on the agenda to discuss this.
So there's no, in other words, there's no discussion then tonight.
Tonight until the twenty-fourth. And then the floor is yours.
I would like to make the floor yours that night. And just have an explanation as to how we get caught in the middle of something that we shouldn't be part of.
The letter was kind of pretty explanatory. As to. I don't know how long you've lived on Schoolhouse Drive.
I didn't age.
So it certainly predates the limited time that the town of OCAM. Did snow and ice removal. We've only done one season, basically. And that was on the intent that this was gonna get resolved with the developer. So the town doesn't own the roads. So.
We didn't intend to actually get into this tonight.
No.
We were gonna hear some discussion. But if it's open for tonight. Oh yeah, if it's open for tonight, we do have concerns as put in the letter. Which would be that. First of all, should we be the ones responsible for setting, settling a dispute? Maybe, we understand there might be a dispute. A legal dispute going on around us, which we don't feel like we want to make that. And therefore now we're held hostage maybe to that dispute.
You were gonna be held hostage two seasons ago when he decided to stop plowing. Alright, we didn't like that comment he gave us that he was gonna stop plowing. So what we did was we tried to work with him and tell him how to get those roads accepted. We can't approach them, they have to approach us by law.
We understand that.
Okay, so we, we've been working on that, our attorneys and his attorneys have been working back and forth. Now they've dropped the ball, they don't want anything to do with anything.
So the town has spent quite a bit of money over the last three years. To bring this to a resolution so that we can accept the roads, which is what the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board want to do. Because that puts the roads on the state DOT list, it does a bunch of things. But as we were advised by Town Council. The town entity of Town of OCAM, we, we don't have a dog in the hunt, we can only stand on the town bounds on Turnpike Road. And look in, it's all private property.
Okay. What about, if I may bring it up. I understand that Shore Drive, Shore Road and Pine over on the other side of town have never been accepted by the town, would that be true? The one that leads down into the town beach is what used to be the town beach.
I don't believe they are, but I think that was something that was settled at town meeting in nineteen sixty-three.
But, but if they've never been accepted, then they've set a past precedent by plowing those roads. That, if that can be done there.
Well, the difference is, is the town owns the town beach down there.
But they don't own the road. So therefore. You go down to the beach through the road that the town doesn't own, but it gets plowed in the winter. And there's another one, Pine, I think, that comes off of that. And so we're not asking for anything special other than to have a similar situation until this maybe is legally resolved. But to be held in this situation. Where we feel we've been citizens in this town since nineteen seventy-seven, it's been a beautiful place to live. Suddenly we have this thrust on us and it just feels like.
But it's been, it's been thrust on you the whole nineteen years. You haven't dealt with this for nineteen years as a resident of Skyline Drive. The town just got involved because the developer pulled out just before winter. And we've been trying to rectify the situation, and it is not. It's the developer's responsibility. So whether you as a group of nineteen resident or homes need to. This would just be advice, I think you need to have to go up to the developer.
Okay, well, wait a minute. Once again, we're being put in the middle of a squabble that the town has set up, we were given.
No, no, we didn't set this up. We didn't set anything up.
Okay, we were given a permit. Living on Cam on that street. Seems to me it was passed somehow to be able to live there. At this point. After nineteen years, and I know there's been some problems over the years, legal issues or whatever. But if.
But they weren't the town's legal issues.
Okay, but we would like to be treated like the other streets across the town. Which. It would seem to me if those are getting plowed, then I should get plowed, it's a beautiful road, it's one of the best roads in town. And suddenly this comes up out of the blue on us when snow is about to start. And it just feels like an unfair way to thrust this on us, and maybe there's a better solution that the town can come up with, if they did do it last year. Maybe we need a little more time to get through this. Maybe cover it for another year at least and get the legal issues settled, whatever they are.
I think the town's opinion is, the developer. Is probably, should have to plow the roads this year, just like he's, they've done for eighteen years.
Okay, but if he said he's not gonna do it, are we gonna be possibly left stranded? Because they're, they do need to get school buses down there, we need to get fuel, oil deliveries and natural gas in some cases. And you need to get out, to get out, just to get groceries, if there's a fire down there, what happens then? Do we just let the fire go? Let it burn? What if we need ambulance or police?
Well, I. We've always supplied fire and ambulance service. The last nineteen years and police.
It was two feet of snow there. It's gonna break.
Realistically, if there's two feet of snow and you need an ambulance, we're gonna send a plow in there.
Well, that's, that's okay. And fire?
And fire.
Okay. So in the meantime, we just have to, we're more or less thrown on the mercy of the town to decide, well, maybe you can.
I gotta stop you, George, I don't, I don't like the way you say that, the mercy of the town, it is not anything to do with the town. It's, it's the mercy of the developer who's basically. Walked away from his responsibilities.
I apologize for saying that.
We have tried for three years. And I've only been on the board going on my second year. This predates me. And I mean, you have two members of the planning board that have been working with this for over twenty years to bring this to.
Okay.
Fruition. And the town cannot compel legally. And that's our advice from Town Council. We, we can't compel anybody to do anything on Skyline Drive or Old School House Road. It's not, it's not a town property, it's not a town, the road is not owned by the town at this point, we would like it to be very much.
Does this more like make us like a community of ourselves separate from OCAM?
I don't know how to answer that.
Well, because we do pay taxes directly to OCAM. And it's a fairly hefty amount from the bylaws.
Yeah.
Really? And I feel like, gee, there should be something in return.
Most developers have homeowners associations when they build these types of developments. Jack didn't do that. But that should have happened, particularly where we don't own the roads. It's tremendous liability for us to go down there, we rip those roads up during the plowing, the town of OCAM is responsible, our insurance company is not covering us. Because we have no business doing it. If one of our plow drivers gets injured down there, we're on the hook.
Okay, I'll go back to Shore Drive, is that true there?
Shore Drive goes down to the town beach, the fire department needs access to the water, for the tankers.
Okay, is there a, is there a place down near the cul-de-sac? Where, where there's an easement for water too?
Mm-hmm, there's no easement. There's no easement, he refused to give us one.
Well, he didn't even refuse to give us one, it's, it's not in the subdivision plans to convey an easement.
But we contacted him, tried to negotiate with him, and he wouldn't do it. So we can't use that. This is why we're between a rock and a hard place, we, we understand what you're saying, believe me, we understand.
We'll talk to. I don't know what we'll do.
And the reason you put on for the twenty-fourth is we wanted an extra week in here so that we can contact legal counsel and light a fire on the builders' attorneys. That's why we weren't gonna go into this tonight.
We sent them a letter. To. Kind of force their hand, the attorneys for. Longview Estates.
For this letter.
Before the letter was sent out, we received no response. The letter was requesting all documents that are required by the planning board. To move this forward to a town meeting. Which is the roadways laid out, the meets and bounds which have been installed. And then the highway superintendent has to. At the planning board's request goes in and says, yeah, the roads are good, and then it all comes back to us. And then it goes on an article for the town meeting, for the roads to be accepted. And it's what we've been trying to do for three years. And the conundrum lies with the attorneys for the developer. And. I, I've had the argument with Town Council, how do we force the issue with them, and they don't even respond. And it's private property. So.
And the developer, if I may, is getting all the letters that are being sent, so he is, or we think is aware of the situation.
Because we've sent, you know, return receipt requested certified mail.
And we got.
To the attorneys.
Back.
Involved for the developer.
In his home, too, yeah.
So for the moment, you do say you'll get a fire truck down there if there's a fire.
Yeah, they need to get in.
Yeah, I mean, there was never any.
Ambulance down there or police if it's necessary.
Yeah, there was never any not to do that, and that's been done for nineteen years, since the, since the development started. Fire, police have always.
Talking about his exigent circumstances, yeah, absolutely, the town's gonna react to that, absolutely.
When you're talking about the developer, are you talking about Como?
Yes. Now. OCAM Sand and Gravel was reconstituted. For basically a year, and that was for Mr. Ramadillo to sign off whatever shares that. In the roads that were part of OCAM Sand and Gravel after the bankruptcy thing. And. That was done, it was approved by the Secretary of State, Galvin. And our understanding is he signed over whatever rights, and that document went to the attorneys for Como. Longview Estates. We've never seen it, Phil has actually gone into Splain and Splain as the planning board chair and. Haven't got anywhere, not even. So. But legally, we're, we're, we're up against a stone wall as far as what we can legally compel. You know, as the town. Like I say, this is something that should have been resolved years ago.
We reached out to them. The Como. We didn't have to do that. We reached out to them realizing we gotta do something with this plowing situation. So we've done the Band-Aid effect for two, two seasons already.
Well, it's not even two, it's a season. Well, it's not even two. It's a season started in January twenty four. Up till now.
Yeah, we saw the trucks and we thought, oh, maybe they finally got this resolved.
Well, my understanding is Como didn't plow it until it was all done snowing over the years.
Somebody was plowing it. I don't know if Jack was doing it or what.
Joe or Mike's?
Somebody was.
It was one of them.
But I I think Como was too, but he wouldn't. Just in talking with the highway department, he wouldn't show up until it was all over. So.
Well, at least, you know, two of us were down there kind of stuck for a moment.
Well, my recommendation would be. I think if the attorneys that we named in the letter, if they were to get letters from residents. Down there, that may do more than to get this moving than. Cause that would be pressure.
Yeah, well.
You could do one letter and have everybody sign it. To show.
Yeah, that makes us. That makes the the group, whoever lives down there begin to have to have meetings and it's like your your own little organization.
Oh, I mean. You may have to do that. Because like I say, town council has told us we cannot compel anything off a turnpike road. When it steps over into Skyline Drive. Or Old Schoolhouse. We don't own it.
They would just get us the paperwork. That they have. Landing board's ready to move on this. We're ready to move on this. Get it done.
We'll just um sit back and see what happens, I guess.
I I think that would be your best bet is to talk with your neighbors. I I wouldn't sit back because you may have. More of a say with this attorney. Firm. They may pay more attention to you because they're not paying attention to us.
What would make you think they would pay more attention to us rather than to a town?
They know.
Cause you have a.
Anything to them.
You have a vested interest.
We have no legal grounds. They know that.
You do.
You do.
Okay, I see. Is it Longview Estates or is it John Spillane?
Attorney. Spillane and Spillane are the attorneys for Longview Estates.
Guess we're all set with that.
Do you wanna come back to twenty fourth to hear winning updates?
Yeah, because I think I. I will make a contact uh. With this Spillane. I don't know where that will go, but hopefully.
Well, hopefully if. You have a way that we haven't been able to crack the the gatekeeper. At the front desk, so.
Sounds promising.
No, but you have you you have a vested interest.
Yeah.
As far as an owner in the subdivision.
Absolutely.
You know, if the town owned a lot in the subdivision, we could probably bring a little more pressure to bear, but we don't.
And that next town meeting, there's another resident who wants to be on the agenda from.
From.
You guys are on Old School and Skyline Drive.
Skyline, okay.
So there'll be someone else from that's coming to that meeting.
Back again and we'll hope hope that something further happens.
I I would really recommend getting together with your neighbors and maybe putting a letter together to.
Someone has to take the lead fortunately.
Okay, thanks very much. And then cross your fingers, cause there's fifty fifty chance they respond and hopefully they do. You know, so we can get this moving.
If the homeowners write specifically to John Spillane or Michael Spillane. Uh I think you can get past paralegal, but we are convinced just.
And I the the letter has um. Mike's email, so that's the good, the right email.
And maybe that.
It should say MJ Spillane.
I'm gonna talk to John. I'm gonna talk to John. Nothing ever happens. And uh we are convinced that you can reach either John Spillane or Michael directly somehow. Wouldn't be surprised if they say, we know anything, they will get right on it.
All right, so. If I'm to contact. Blaine, somehow I need to get past. That's.
Martha.
Martha Campbell is the.
Okay.
But I did send this letter to Martha to the other Spillane, so he had responded either.
Yes, but it's us.
George, but the the procedure is in the letter that we sent you.
Right.
We worked on the letter to you folks with with um Phil and with town council. Explain the procedure that has to happen. So if you can, I don't know, build that into your letter a little bit. It might help.
Thank you.
All right, thanks for coming in.
Board have any new business?
I don't.
Any old business?
No. Correspondence is done.
Done. Admin assistant report.
I just want to report to the board that I had a Zoom with the Central Mass Regional Emergency Communication Center. That's a long one. Um in regards to that's our dispatch and services. The building that they were initially hoping would come to fruition in Auburn did not. Now they're looking into a location. I think I had reported this last meeting, uh nine Trolley Crossing, which is the old St. Vincent. It's roughly the same size as the Auburn location. That was eighteen thousand. This one's sixteen thousand. But it has more of an open space so they can kind of really make it their own instead of. Unlike the other building where it was.
That was a Trolley one.
The Cheltenham. So fingers crossed that that um the owner seems very willing to hold the uh the location until next. Fiscal year and and make some changes, so um it sounds very promising. So we'll stay tuned on that. Also, Spencer, Sturbridge, Auburn, Charlton and Oxford. Have all voted yes in wanting to join the district. Sutton will be having a meeting with their board of selectmen soon, um and hopefully that will be a yes as well. Southbridge, what they went to city council, that failed. Southbridge still believes that they, you know, don't wanna give up their center and might. Wanna develop their own with surrounding communities. So that one's a no-go as of right now, which is fine. And Mike Moriarty informed that he is in the initial discussion stages with Northbridge, Millbury and Douglas.
So what's Southbridge gonna take?
Exactly.
We got them all.
Uh yes, so the five that have voted yes, now we're just waiting. The district has to vote to accept them in, but they are there. Um, let's see. Um, the core group, which is the current employees, will automatically join the district if they choose to. They are right now, and then any other positions that they will need will be open for. Any anyone to apply. So all these employees from these other additional communities are not guaranteed to be. Ah an employee, they would have to apply just like anyone else. The core team gets pretty much first dibs and automatic in. Um. Currently, you know, we signed something off saying that. The district is still is under the umbrella of Rutland. Just until June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. Using, you know, their treasurer still um accountant and whatnot. And hopefully by July first, we have that going where it'll be. The district-owned entity and employees. Whoever that might be. It could still be possibly one of the town's. Employees that can be the treasurer or the accountant. I have a little bit of reservations or concerns in that, but. That will be something that the district will discuss uh a little more in detail. In the months to come. And. That's pretty much my update on that. In regards to the Civic Plus website, things are progressing and moving along with. The update, I did two Zooms on training for the new up website, so hopefully within the next week or two, it should be launching and. We should have it. At least in compliance for the grant by the end of the calendar year. And auto fleet update, just working with Maya with all the vehicles that were listed in our fleet. Uh there is definitely some cleanup to. Had to be done uh with removing or adding, but everything is up to date. With all the um. With everything that we have registered.
Each vehicle insured separately. It's a fleet.
Mm-hmm.
Right. But do they? Oh, so they list each vehicle by class by.
Yeah.
Within the fleet.
Yeah, they do them by departments.
Yep. So removing a vehicle really doesn't change the calculation?
Not usually.
Right.
No, but there were some that were a couple that were listed in the wrong department, so that got strained out. A couple that were on there that shouldn't have been. Um, so that's more just like house cleaning and knowing, you know. Them having everything we have and being on the same page. And it's not listed on here, but I did um. Contact Board of Health and I believe that they did pick up the um. The containers that were left next to the Sharps container, so the individual containers, which is great. Uh, the only other thing is I'm not sure if maybe I maybe I miscommunicated. I think that the Sharps container is still fully. Um full, so therefore I, well, I know it is because I just opened the door, the uh lid and it's. You, there's nothing, you can't get anything else in there, so I'm not. Sure um as to. I'll send another email just.
So that's that's funded through Board of Health for a grant, right?
It's not through the coalition, because I suppose with the coalition, yeah. No, and I don't know, and I guess I'll send the email, like I said. From last I recall was that was on an on-call basis because we're small, you know, it wasn't like uh every month they were coming. I believe it was on a on-call basis.
Yeah.
Um, I don't have any of that, you know, the company's contact information or whatnot, so. I just, I think that when folks come in to drop something off, they do have it in a contained. Form, so then they just leave it next to the contain to the Sharps red container.
Mm-hmm.
So. We just have to find a better.
So moving forward. When the grant runs out. Is it funded? Or do or does the Board of Health have to re- reapply for another grant?
I believe they built into their budget to be able to handle it.
Okay.
I, yeah.
And then the other. I think we've. I know Maribel for the opinion that's not a good spot for it. In the foyer.
Yeah.
And PD does the. Expired medication drop off, would that be a better?
Yeah, I don't.
I think so.
I don't necessarily think it's a bad.
Insecure.
I just don't like when it's when things are left on the side, even though they're contained, it's just not a good.
Does the same company pick up the drugs that picks up?
I don't know.
It's the same company. Makes sense to give it to the PD.
Yeah, I have no idea.
So let the Board of Health. Fund it.
Yeah.
But just have the drop.
Cause they can put them. Sheen there.
Yeah, I I I don't know much about that.
Which maybe they could have an out. An outside drop. Different type of box, maybe.
Well, they they could really put it in that lobby. Leave that front door unlocked because the indoor is locked and is alarm.
Hmm.
And his cameras.
Yeah, is that big enough though?
It's a small box.
Don't they take the material from the box and then dump it in a container downstairs in the.
Yeah, so when. They have to see, so then that.
The company, isn't the company Stericycle?
Yes.
That picks up.
Yeah.
So then, but.
They just pick up the box. They don't empty the.
No, so this, yeah, someone has to empty this one physically.
Yeah.
Bring the contents downstairs.
They pick up downstairs.
And they have to enclose it, seal it, tape it, and then they it gets picked up from downstairs. It's in the boiler room.
Yeah.
So again, but if if it was in the PD, then where would they put this other box? I don't know.
In the garage.
But would.
In in the building they have outside. He's got room.
Well, I I mean, it's.
Well, I I'm just thinking if they're doing the expired medications. And they're dealing with that.
Hmm.
Um.
Yeah.
Then it'd be one stop for.
That's what I was thinking.
For folks that.
Both.
I wonder if they have like an outdoor, like a mailbox type. Sharps thing.
They do it because.
You can put it on the side of the building, you know, say to the right of the door as you go in.
Paxton has it right in their main door going in to the right.
Cause in that way you could, they could just.
Twenty-four seven, they can dump them.
Yeah.
And again, there's cameras out there, so. Nobody's gonna touch them.
And it'd be a sealed box.
Mm-hmm.
You know, with just a a drop door, you know, like a UPS drop or something.
Yeah.
And again, I and I know that um Mr. Langley's made this, I remember in one of the meetings, because he would. Often be the one that emptied it. They need to be in a Sharps, like just because that's a Sharps box doesn't mean that they can just be thrown in individually. You still need to have them contained.
Yeah.
Because I believe there's stuff loose in there. It's more the bigger things that retract, but still you you should have, you know, like the GLP. Um injections and stuff like that. I I've seen folks dropping them off individually.
Right.
Um, not my place to be like, no, you know, I.
Well, no, there's a day we opened it and it went all over the floor and it was all individual.
Yeah, so.
Beatles and um.
I, you know, I I feel concerned for the Board of Health person, whoever does it, to have to empty that, so.
I mean, is there a service? That would empty the Sharps? Box.
They won't touch it unless it's sealed in.
No, because it's the, so I've had some employees from this company come and say, as soon as they're like, nope, the box is not sealed. I'm not taking it. Then I've had some that come and go, oh, fine, I'll tape it. I'm really not supposed to, but I'm already here, so because if they get.
Yeah.
You know.
Well, I guess.
Pricked.
Let me rephrase the question then. Is there a company that supplies a service where they do it all?
No.
I don't know.
No, I don't either.
I don't.
No.
So in the meantime, you know, I I I'll let them know again that it appears to still be full. I just. I know someone came in. Earlier today to drop something off and they couldn't. Cause it was a bigger box, right? So they did take it. They didn't leave it. Um, but. And even the bigger boxes, I don't even know if it's because it's full, but because ours is kind of fairly small, which I get it. We only have so much so much space. Um, some of the bigger containers that were given out don't necessarily fit in there, so.
So we need.
This person just took it, but then there's been folks and and that's fine too, that just leave it on the side thinking that, you know.
Somebody else to take care of it.
Right, and and I get that too. It's just.
No, but there is not, there is not somebody else to take care of it.
Yeah.
It's kind of the point of this discussion.
No.
I mean, it would be nice if they had a container. Where you have a cardboard box in the container.
Oh, yeah.
And you open the lid, you put everything in, it goes in the box and you. Pull the box out, you're not even handling this stuff.
Mm-hmm.
And that's why I wondered if there's a different.
It's a really big, it's a really big. Uh box and it has the red hazard bag in it and you dump everything in there.
Yeah.
But yeah.
Yeah, and so it would probably have that. That red bag right in the box and would go right in.
Yeah.
You know, a drop container.
I'd be at the C one do that.
And then you're.
Maybe we can make one, a small one, like where do we get a small box?
Makes sense.
Yeah, that would, because it's less hands-on for everyone's safety.
Other than sealing the bag.
In the bag, yeah. Yeah.
And then the whole thing folds up, you take the top, you take it out, the guy. Puts it in his truck or whatever vehicle and off they go, put a new one in.
Yeah.
So.
Maybe we can make our own box.
Have to get a patent.
You know, like a. One of those like um. Clothes donation bins or something.
I would imagine that stuff all winds up down at the incinerator, right?
No.
And it just melts.
Yep.
Yes.
Anyways, no, I I. I just wanted to say, cause like I said, when someone came in, I didn't want them to feel like. It's there, but they couldn't drop anything off or felt, at least they felt like they weren't gonna leave it, so.
Yeah.
That's all. That's all I have.
Won't make a motion to adjourn unless you got anything else you wanna talk about, Tom.
Nope, uh, second.
Seven forty-seven.
Seven forty-seven, adjourn.